If he comes, I assume so? I'm not sure.
Another meeting to order then? Very good. Is there any, is the mayor online? Not training us? Alright, roll call please.
Mayor Hoffbauer, Mayor Pro Tim Loa,
Here.
Council members Caddio,
Here.
Bishop, and Battencourt,
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Any motions? Alright, public comments on closed session items. The public is invited to comment on any closed session item listed below. Please submit a speaker's form to the city clerk before this portion of the meeting begins. Each person addressing the council is customarily given up to three minutes to speak, but double the time allotted to non-English speakers using a translator. The amount of time authorized may be adjusted by the chair. If you wish to provide information to the council, please present the city clerk with seven copies. Otherwise, your materials will simply be added to the administrative record. If you're attending the meeting by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. If attending by personal computer, please click the raise your button, sorry, raise your hand button. Press star six to unmute yourself, state your name, and begin speaking. Is anyone online?
We have two attendees.
Okay.
None of them had their hands raised though.
None of them had what? Oh, none of them had their hands raised. Okay, there's just two persons observing. Okay. There's no one in the chamber, so at this point then, presentation by the city attorney?
We can now turn to closed session. We'll be discussing the four items on the agenda.
Great.
All right, we are returning from closed session. And is there an announcement by the city attorney?
There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
All right, and so with that, we will adjourn the closed session meeting. And at seven o'clock. So I've asked Brian Guzman to lead us in the pledge today. Would you lead us, please? And it will be a moment of solace and honor of our truths.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Also tonight, we will be adjourning the meeting in the memory of Robert Almata Senior. He's a long-term Palmdale resident and great community member. He was a beloved father, grandfather, and great-grandfather who recently died due to COVID and other medical complications. So the meeting will be adjourned in his name. And today is the anniversary of the murder of Sergeant Stephen Owen, who was on the sheriff's department. And he was killed by a person he was pursuing for a burglary. And so in his memory as well, we will adjourn tonight. All right, so thank you again, Mr. Guzman, for the pledge. And Jesse, we're going to call you up for a presentation of acute critter that's available for adoption at the Palmdale Animal Care Center.
Well, good evening, everyone. Tonight I have Sally with me. Sally is a ten-month-old kitty. And she came to us, well, actually, this is her third time coming to us. Her two previous adopters said that she wasn't getting along with the other animals in the house. But upon her behavioral assessment in our dog play groups, she became one of the rock stars. She would meet everyone and basically introduce herself to the other dogs. And then if they, if she saw dogs trying to, you know, get antsy with each other or anything, she would step in between them and basically break it up. Which is really good behavior for this type of dog. Which is really good behavior for this type of dog, especially in the play groups. And the play groups we use to evaluate them as far as how they act with other animals and how they act with our handlers in the play yard. And she is very curious. Right? You can see by the way she's looking around and stuff. But she's very curious, and that's how she was in the play yard. At first, it was dainty, and then it got a little rough and tumble. And then she became a rock star, which is excellent for this type of dog. They have her listed at two years old, but she's really 10 months. So she's still basically a puppy. And with some good behavioral techniques, she can turn out to be a really, really good dog. She's got all her shots, she's got her chip, and she's available for adoption to the public. Middle-aged school kids and large dogs are okay. Keep going, keep going, take more. Come here, baby, come on. All right, girl. Just what she's been doing with me all night, just she'll come up and she'll just put herself against me, you know, like, like a magnet.
Thank you, Jesse. My name is Mary Valeriusenio. I am one of the Public Safety Specialists for the City of Palmdale. I am kind of filling in for my supervisor, Carrie German, to encourage all of you to adopt this pet. I am a pet lover. I have two at home, so I cannot take Sally home. But if I could, I would. I know there's a four limit, but I can only afford the two that I have. So this month until October 31st, adoption fees are being waived for dogs that have been at the Animal Care Center for over 60 days. So tonight, we bring you Sally, and we hope that those of you here in the audience or those of you watching will consider taking Sally. We'll post her on our social media, which is the Palmdale Public Safety site and everywhere else. And if you do adopt her, you can reach us at Public Safety, and we will give you a little treat just for taking her home with you. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Jesse. We always appreciate you coming in. Your offering. I took it off. We need to call, re-roll call again, please.
Mayor Hoffauer, Mayor Protem Loa.
Here.
Councilmember Cariel.
Here.
Bishop.
Here.
And Mr. Hoffauer just said he's here.
And Baton Court.
Here.
All right, and Mr. Bishop is going to try to be on with my phone.
I am here, guys.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
I'm here as well, but there's, the audio is not good.
Yeah, the audio has been a little choppy so far. Just so you guys know.
Thank you. All right, so we have a couple of proclamations. Captain here? No? Twenty minutes? Who do I give this to? My Ben's saying, oh, there you are. All right, hey, man. Well, thank you. I wasn't sure. This is a proclamation for Crime Prevention Month. And whereas the city, the vitality of the city depends on how safe we keep our homes, neighborhoods, schools, workplaces, and communities. And crime and fear destroy our trust in others and in civic institutions, threatening the community's health, prosperity, and quality of life. And people of all ages must be made aware of the dangers of technology crime and how they can protect themselves from becoming victims. And crime prevention initiatives must include self-protection and security. But they must go beyond these to promote collaborative efforts to make neighborhoods safer for all ages and to develop positive educational and recreational opportunities for young people. And it goes on from there. So we know that security is most important obligation of the city government. And I think we have a great department with the sheriff here, and we want to keep the community safe. So therefore, Mr. Hoffauer, on behalf of all of the city council, hereby proclaim October 22nd as Crime Prevention Month in the City of Palmdale and urge all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, and businesses to invest in the power of prevention and work together to make Palmdale a safer, stronger, more caring community. And that's been signed by all the council members. So on behalf of the city, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to share just a couple of words. As I mentioned earlier, I am one of the Public Safety Specialists here in the City of Palmdale. And for us, it is great honor to receive the proclamation. But it's also equally important for us to bring the message to all of the residents. So all of you, again, sitting here tonight and watching, we encourage you to continue to work with us because we do have a very strong partnership with our Palmdale Sheriff's Station. However, we also have a strong partnership with those of you that live here. So if you don't have a Neighborhood Watch program on your block, you can contact us at 267-5170 to start one. If you live in multi-units, you can also contact us because we do have the Partners Against Crime program there as well. And for this month, we are going to be working, trying to get more of our businesses involved. And so what I have for you tonight is I have a flyer that I'm going to leave in the back. We are going to provide two online business watch meetings. So you don't have to leave your home, your business either. You can log on on Zoom. What you do is you call us at 267-5170 or email us at publicsafety@palmdale.org, and we will send you the login information. That is going to be October the 12th at 7:00 PM. And then we have a morning one on October the 18th at 10:00 AM. So if you know any business owner in the area, or if you're yourself a business owner, contact us, and that's what we're focusing on this month because it is Crime Prevention Month. Thank you.
Very good. Oh, wait, come here. We have to make it official. Should be good in front of you guys there. Why don't we take up five? Thank you very much. Okay. Yeah, please, of course. So we also have a proclamation on behalf of the city for Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month. And the City of Palmdale and the nation have been influenced by the extraordinary cultural, ethnic, linguistic, and religious diversity of its residents. And whereas there's an estimated 1 billion Hindus worldwide and approximately 3.4 billion Hindu Americans living across the United States. And whereas the City of Palmdale is home to a significant Hindu American population. And whereas Hindu Americans in the City of Palmdale represent diverse ethnic backgrounds, including individuals of Indian, Pakistani, Bichan, Caribbean, Nepali, Bhutanese, Sri Lankan, Caribbean, and European descent. That's quite a mouthful. And American. And this year marks the 129th anniversary of when Hinduism was officially introduced to the United States by Swami Vivekananda. Did I get it close? Okay. At the 1893 World's Parliament of Religions in Chicago, Illinois, and the 122nd anniversary of when he founded the Vedanta Society in San Francisco in 1900. And therefore, the city recognizes and acknowledges the significant contributions made by the Hindu heritage to our city, to our state, and to our country. And so therefore, on behalf of the mayor and on behalf of the entire city council, we proclaim the month of October as Hindu American Appreciation and Awareness Month and urge all residents to increase awareness and understanding of the Hindu American community. So if you'll step up, please, all of you, and perhaps you will accept this. Yes. Come on up. So who is, who am I going to hand this to? We'll take a picture. He'll take pictures for you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're quite welcome.
Appreciate it.
Can I also ask if we can acknowledge that September 15th through October 15th is Hispanic Heritage Month as well?
I believe we've got that, yes.
Did we have it on the?
I thought we had done that previously.
Did we? Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, it's good for you to point it up.
Yeah.
It's very significant. All right, is there a waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances? Is there a move to?
No move.
That's, Mayor Hoffauer?
Aye.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Cariel seconds. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That's done. Is there any staff additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor Protem, we'd like to remove item 12.3.
All right. So that will be removed then? Public comments on listed agenda items.
Can I ask why that's being removed, please?
It was requested to be put over until the future council.
By whom?
To be selected.
By whom? I hate to put you on the spot, but this is an ongoing problem that we were elected to for your terms. And now they're asking us to stop reviewing things during our terms and putting things off till the next council comes on board. And I think that's kind of a dereliction of duty. If we're not able to do our jobs, then why are we here?
Well, if it was. Kind of been going on for a few months.
Yeah, it has.
Well, it's on the agenda. Is it proper to make a motion to keep it on the agenda, Mr. City Attorney?
You can make a motion to keep it on the agenda. Yes.
Okay, well, I make a motion that will keep it on the agenda. A second.
That seems to die for record.
I have to, I have to, I guess I'm a little confused as. I know that there are some legal issues that were coming to our attention regarding this. And are we needing more time to resolve the legal issues, or are we truly?
Yeah. Thanks, Laura. I'd like to, yeah, I just have questions as to what's going on before I'm ready to make a decision.
If it's, is it really because we want to resolve the legal issues? Or is this truly because you don't want us to make a decision, you want a new council to make a decision? I want the truth.
So.
Anybody who's willing.
So there was a letter that was received and which, in my view, would not prevent the city council from making a determination of how it wishes to proceed.
I think, I think a few months ago, there was a very heated debate and very adamant feelings to enact an ordinance. I'm just, I'm confused why it wasn't handled then when this whole new process went forward. I think that this was kind of, maybe it should have been thought of then. But I think this is, now it's, you know, we got an election looming here. And now all of a sudden, we want to keep changing it. I don't think that it lacks, the issue doesn't lack merit. But I'm just thinking that's a little, too little, too late, in my opinion. Well, I'll tell you what my surprise here is again, that this is the second time that this is a surprise to me. I'm just hearing about this. And at the last meeting, I asked if this would have been a Brown Act violation if each individual council member would have been noticed, notified that this was a request to be removed. I think that it's better that we know ahead of time and not be surprised here on the dais because that's, I think it's inappropriate that we are taken by surprise. I don't think that this would have been a violation of the Brown Act if we were notified individually. That's my concern again.
So what?
Is the motion to put it off till the new council is handled, empaneled? Or is this to put it off until next month?
It's probably best if it just gets put over past the election.
Because?
The council, then the new council could decide how it's going to select its mayor.
I think, I think that's already in the ordinance. I just think that then they can decide whether or not they want to change the decision that was made a few months ago, back in April. What does the current ordinance say about the future mayor? How is it going to be selected?
I'm sorry, Mr. Cariel?
What does the ordinance say today about how the mayor is going to be selected?
It's by, basically by pulling straws, I believe.
Is that? Yeah, it says that it's by lot. And then although it's been portrayed as a rotation after that, the ordinance does not say rotation. It says picked by a majority to council. So it's a lottery, short straw or bingo balls or whatever, however you, it's decided to do a lottery. And then after that, following year, it's whoever, whoever gets three votes. And all elected council members will participate in that roll lock?
Of course, yeah. Okay.
So it would be a pleasure of the council-type decision, just like we do with the Mayor Protem decision?
That's essentially right.
After this year.
Right.
So this, this year, it's whoever, whoever ends up there on Pearl Harbor Day on December 7th will draw a short, will draw straws or whatever you guys decide. And then following that, then everybody gets to debate it or arm wrestle it or show how they're the best person to take it up in 2024, I guess.
Right. So as I understand it, staff is simply saying, take it off the calendar for now, and it won't be brought back, I don't believe, until after the election.
Thank you. Was Mr. Austin that requested it, not staff? I think he said staff.
Staff made that recommendation, right.
Okay, okay, but Councilmember Bishop made the request to remove it. Is that right?
Remove it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you okay? So I guess if it's in the form of a motion to remove it?
So that we have a motion. I'm not sure that that was true. I think there was a misstatement there, but regardless, the question is, so it's currently on the agenda. The question is, do you wish it to stay on the agenda, or do you wish to put it off to not discuss it this evening?
The recommendation by Ms. Bede was to take it off the agenda. And if there's a motion to that effect, then we can do that.
Just remove it completely?
That's correct.
Because I don't, okay, yeah, because after what I've come to find out, it doesn't seem like it serves any purpose at all. So I'll second that if that's a motion.
Is that Mr. Cariel's motion?
Yeah.
And second by Mr. Bishop. Call the role, please.
Well, let us clarify. My motion was to keep it on the agenda.
Oh, you want to keep it on the agenda? I thought you were taking, asking for it to be removed.
No. The, as understood, this is, has to be removed by Councilman Bishop at the recommendation of staff to remove it. But I made a motion that it stays on the agenda because it's on the agenda.
Okay.
I.
But that motion did not receive a second. Okay.
I do want to clarify. It was not Councilman Bishop.
Okay. Well, he made a, I think he made a, after your motion didn't get a second, then Mr. Bishop made a motion, and I thought you had seconded that motion.
I guess my concern is that, you know, you're gonna, there's a possibility that you may have three new council people. And I hate for them to walk into a situation of chaos. So that's my concern, that they're gonna, they're gonna walk. So, that's my concern, that they're gonna, they're gonna walk in and go, you know, they, they, they have no, no experience. Um, I, I would hope that i- in, in the sense of being good stewards, that we would set them up for success as opposed to setting them up for failure. That's my concern.
So, there's currently a motion on the table.
So, as I understand it, Mr. Bishop made a motion to take this matter off the agenda for today and indefinitely. And are you seconding that motion?
No, my first motion died for the lack of a second.
Correct, okay, so I will second Mr. Bishop's motion. So, I don't think we need any further discussion. Can we call the roll, please? This is to take that agenda item regarding the selection of the mayor off of the agenda for today, and indefinitely.
Mayor Hoppower?
Hoppower, aye.
Mayor Protem Loa?
Yes.
Councilmembers Correo?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
And Bettencourt?
Yes.
You know, it must be passes.
Very good. So, that's removed from the agenda.
So, to, to be clear, so it, it is on the agenda, so, um, the public can speak on that. Um, and certainly because it is on the agenda, the public is entitled to speak on that. Um, the, the motion that was made-
I thought it was just, I thought it was just removed.
But it, it was removed fr- from, we can, but it is, but it's listed on the agenda.
Right.
So, it, so the public will have the opportunity to speak on that if they so choose, and then at that point, then you can decide whether to amend what you've decided.
Right, and that was the, uh, that, the public would be allowed to speak on it when we get to that.
Correct, and then you can decide whether to put it back on the agenda at that point.
And speaking of-
That would be, that would be a motion to reconsider, correct?
Correct.
Well-
Yes.
It'd be, it'd be giving the public an opportunity to speak on the issue when we get to that item. But the item is technically not there, but the public is allowed to speak on that issue. All right, public comments on listed agenda i- agenda items. Excluding public hearings. You may address the council authority once per meeting during public comments. This portion of the public comment is on any item listed on the agenda, excluding public hearings if any. Public comment on public hearings, if any, will be heard when that matter is considered. To address the council authority regarding an item on the agenda, please fill out a speaker's form and submit it to the city clerk before the mayor or the chair announces the item. Each person addressing the council authority is customarily given up to three minutes to speak with double the time allotted to non-English speakers using a translator. The amount of time authorized, authorized may be adjusted by the chair. If you wish to provide information to the council, please prevent the city clerk with seven copies. Otherwise, your materials will simply be added to the administrative record. If you're attending the meeting by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. If attending by personal computer, please click the raise your hand button, press star six to unmute yourself, state your name, and begin speaking. So, do we have any persons wishing to speak online?
None at this time.
Anyone on the phone wishing to speak? Do we have any cards of, uh, the public in the audience here wishing to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, we have items twelve point three and thirteen point one.
Twelve point three, we'll, we'll get to that point when we get to that agenda item. Is there anything on anything else?
So, we have thirteen point one.
Okay. Thirteen point one?
Rich Gallego?
Good evening. Um, there's a couple of things that I wanna speak of tonight, so can you remind me which one is thirteen point one?
They'll have thirteen point one.
Arms and procedures of the city council on public business.
All right, so, I'm sorry, this is a little too short. Um, in looking at the agenda packet and, and the, uh, the staff report for this item, uh, it's pretty unclear that there's any concrete rules that are gonna be changed other than giving the mayor complete discretion as to how long people like me have a, a right to stand here and address you. I find that problematic, because, uh, there are times when we might have a lot of people that have something to say, and if we're limited to one minute, you can't really form a coherent statement. And it's not just to address you guys, because a lot of times you already have been told what we wanna say to you. It's so that the public that's watching and listening can be, you know, informed as to what's going on as well. So, I know that the state Supreme Court has said that it's not a violation of free speech because it doesn't tell us we can't speak, and it doesn't tell us what we can speak on. But limiting it too severely would definitely be an infringement of our free speech rights. And it's, you know, it might be me saying something that Councilman Correo doesn't want, and if he's in that mayor's chair, he might decide not to let me speak very long. But it could be somebody else who feels completely different about things than me, speaking to a more conservative person, and they could do the same thing. I think we should have a system where there is a definite amount of time that's been established that everybody gets to speak, because there's no way that you're gonna avoid accusations of impropriety if you don't have something that's standardized. That's all I have for that right now.
Very good, sir, thank you. Someone else?
We have Kevin Shankman, thirteen point one.
Mr. Shankman.
Good evening. Um, I, I, I actually, uh, did take a look, uh, last night, the night before, at these, uh, proposed council rules, and I, I, I take issue with, with one thing in particular because it is, um, contrary to the law. And, and that is, the rules purport to make anything said in a closed session confidential. There are many things that can be said in a closed session that are not confidential. Um, I would, and, 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 uh, simply bec- because they are communicated in a closed session does not in itself make them confidential. Um, I would encourage you to take a look at the California League of Cities Guide regarding the Brown Act, um, which, which explains this, um, but you should not be adopting something that is contrary to the law. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
No further.
Okay. All right, uh, having no further speakers, uh, at this time, all matters, uh, we've arrived at consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar will be enacted by one motion unless an item is pulled by council, in which case the item will be removed from the calendar and will be considered separately following this portion of the agenda. Does any council member wish to pull anything on the closed, on, on the consent calendar? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Mr. Correo?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bettencourt. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hoppower? Mayor Hoppower?
It takes him a moment.
Yes, Hoppower, aye.
Mayor Protem Loa?
Yes.
Councilmembers Correo?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
And Bettencourt?
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, uh, item twelve point one, public hearing and review of proposed ordinance number fifteen ninety-three for adoption. And the staff is to read the title of ordinance fifteen ninety-three. Ms. Zayas?
Mr. Loa. Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Teri Zayas, and I serve as the city council chief of staff. Before you tonight is the reintroduction of ordinance one five nine three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palmdale, adding chapter nine, unlawful possession of a catalytic converter prohibited, of title ten, vehicles and traffic of the Palmdale Municipal Code establishing regulations prohibiting the unlawful possession of catalytic converters in the city. This ordinance was presented to the city council at the August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two council meeting. Staff was provided direction to revise the ordinance to include three things. At one, a twenty-four hour minimum waiting period between a sale of a catalytic converter and payment. Two, requirement for purchases to keep a record of the make, model, and year of the vehicles. And three, a requirement for a daily transmital, uh, daily transmital for, for purchasers of records that is gonna be required to be kept, um, due to the purchase of a catalytic converter. Since our last discussion, Governor Newsom has passed into law two bills, Assembly Bill one seven four zero and Senate Bill one zero eight seven, which addresses the majority of these items, including not a twenty-four hour waiting period, but a seventy-two hour waiting period for payment in person, and maintaining records to include the name, address, driver's license number, along with a clear photograph or video of the seller, and the year, make, model, license plate number, and vehicle identification number of the vehicle from which the catalytic converter was removed from the vehicle. Furthermore, state law also requires that the records described be made available to law enforcement upon request. To, uh, stay in line with state law, staff recommend, staff recommends removing section three of the ordinance, which is titled records, and adopt as revised. Staff is available for any questions.
So, um, let's, let's start. Uh, Mayor, do you have any questions on this, uh, ordinance? While he's getting his microphone going, is, uh, Mr. Bishop?
He actually hopped off the meeting.
What's, what's that, Mr. Loa?
On, uh, this ordinance, uh, regarding catalytic converters, any questions?
I have no questions. I'm just glad that our city can put something in place that can help, uh, establish more, uh, penalties for these criminals that are picking catalytic converters out of innocent, hardworking people's cars. That I myself am a victim of this, and it's, it's very frustrating and disturbing, and, and, you know, when you go to start your car, and you hear the muffler has been cut out, it's very loud, you can't drive it, and then finding a new one will range you anywhere from a thousand to two thousand dollars. That's even if they have it in stock. So, it's, it's a serious problem, and I'm, I'm very grateful that our staff is doing everything they can to help fight and combat this serious problem.
Very good, thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Bettencourt, any comments or questions?
Well, you know I'm gonna have a lot of comments and questions on this one. Uh, no, so what, basically what-
Just questions at this point.
Really? I can't make comments?
We'll, we'll wait till the public hearing is, tell them here from the public.
I just wanted to explain why it's important.
Okay.
I'll wait.
Thank you.
So, I should open public comment? Is that what we're doing? Mr. Correo?
Any questions?
No questions.
No questions. I do have a question. Uh, and that is, this ordinance, um, meshes with the, uh, the laws that were passed by the governor here recently, and so there's no, there's no conflict. The state preamps, and, and we are operating in the area where the state has not legislated.
Correct. Um, if, if you remove section three as recommended by staff, then there is clearly no issue.
Okay, all right. Mayor, did you, uh, are you available to speak or ask? All right, let's move forward then. Um, so open the session for public comment. Is there anyone online wishing to speak on this item?
None at this time.
On the phone?
None at this time.
In the, uh, chamber here?
No speakers left at this time.
Very good. So, now we can ask questions? All right, I've asked mine, but-
Have comments?
Have comments? Go ahead.
Uh, so I just want the public who's watching to know that, um, not only is it an inconvenience, um, like Councilmember Bishop said, but every time a catalytic converter is taken, it is considered a part-one crime under the FBI's UCI, uh, UCR guidelines. Every time, um, a catalytic converter is taken, and those part-one crimes go up, it affects the crime rate of our city. And the crime rate is what businesses use to try to determine whether they wanna come to our city. Residents look it up to see whether they wanna move to our city. So, each time one of these is taken, it generates a crime stat. Also, um, the, the people who are perpetrating these crimes not only take your catalytic converter, but they very often take your vehicle, and they'll drive it several miles and cut the catalytic converter off. So, not only do you lose your catalytic converter, but you may lose your car, too. Um, there's a lot of, um, metals inside these catalytic converters, and that's what people are taking to the recycling centers to cash in on the metal that's inside these catalytic converters. They might get two hundred dollars a catalytic converter, and then you gotta pay twelve hundred bucks to put it back on your car. So, it impacts the residents, it impacts, um, the city, it impacts our economic development. And that's why, um, it, it's not just a local problem, it's not just a state problem. This is happening all across of the United States, every state, every city. Everybody is facing the same crisis. So, the state of California has, has taken the lead, uh, in putting as, as many regulations, rules, and con- constrictions on, on this pro- this, this theft as we can to try and stop it. So, I just wanted people to know why it matters. That's all.
Mr. Correa?
No, I just wanna say that at the time, and I think it worked at this time because we tabled this, uh, two weeks ago, or last month, and now with the two bills, the two bills that passed. I think that saved, uh, staff time and the council time also, uh, because otherwise we'd have to bring this back again, so.
And Mr. Bishop has commented, uh, Mr. Hoppower, if you're able to speak? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. All right, well, this is a very important ordinance, uh, for us to add to what the state has, uh, has already passed. It's a, it's a critical problem, it's already been pointed out. And we, we hope with this, uh, we'll be able to address it and, uh, and curtail or stop completely. Probably not completely, but, uh, curtail it as much as possible with that catalytic converters. So, with that, is there a motion?
Make the motion to approve.
Ms. Bettencourt?
I'll second that.
And seconded by Mr. Correo. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Loa?
Yes.
Councilmembers Correo?
Yes.
Bishop?
Mr. Bishop?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we're taking a vote on the ordinance? A or N?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And Bettencourt?
Sorry about that.
Yes, and Bettencourt.
And Mr. Hoppower?
Mayor Hoppower?
He is currently not in the meeting.
He's not in, okay, very good. So, it passes four, nothing. Thank you. All right, so we are now at twelve point two. And, uh, this is a public hearing, review of proposed resolution CC twenty twenty-two dash zero nine one for adoption. Staff to read the title of the resolution, number CC two zero two two dash zero nine one.
Well, again, again, my name is Teri Zayas, and I serve as the city council chief of staff. The item before you is resolution number CC twenty twenty-two dash zero nine one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale adopting administrative citations unlawful possession of a catalytic converter. Now that the ordinance number one five nine three has been adopted, this revol- resolution establishes administrative citation and the related fine amount for the unlawful possession of a catalytic converter. The catalytic converter administrative citation will be solely adopted under this resolution, and the fine amount will be consolidated with the city's next annual fee resolution. Adopting this fee will provide law enforcement flexibility by providing the option to issue a misdemeanor or administrative citation. Staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero nine one. Staff is available for any questions.
So, if I have five catalytic converters in my possession, do I get five sites? Or just one site for all five? I'm just curious. Let me pull up the resolution. I have that.
Perhaps that should be addressed to the city attorney?
Uh, we have online, uh, Baron Bettenhousen of our office, who, uh, has advised on this.
I think it calls for a legal opinion, so.
Okay.
Sorry, um, I don't know if he's online. I was busy texting with him. Apparently, he's not online. Would you ask the question again? I was-
So, the question is, um, we're gonna, and we're gonna issue administrative sites for the unlawful possession of a catalytic converter. If they have five catalytic converters, do they get five sites for each catalytic converter? Or is it one site for all five?
I, I do not know the answer to that, that question right now.
Okay.
I think, I, do we know? We don't know. We would have to look into it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I apologize. Okay, so I'm being, yeah, so Rhonda, the, our, our legal expert over here is informing me that it indicates that it's, it says per, that the citation is for the possession of a catalytic converter. So, that would be five different instances.
Six, seven citations.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Correo?
No questions.
Mr. Bishop, any questions on this matter? I know he's in an area of poor connectivity.
Oh, no, no, I have no questions at this time. Thank you, guys.
Very good. Um, well, I have a co- a very quick comment, and that is, uh, I'm glad to see that there's an escalating, um, description for the citations, including first offense would be five hundred dollars, and I suppose if you have five catalytic converters, it'd be five hundred for the first one, a thousand for the second, twenty-five hundred for the third, and I guess twenty-five hundred for the fourth, and twenty-five hundred for the fifth. So, it has kind of an escalating, um, amount of money as far as the fine is concerned, plus penalty assessments, and other fees. Other than that, I don't have any other questions, but we'll open this matter for public comment. Is there anyone online wishing to speak on this item?
None at this time.
Thank you. Anybody on the phone?
None at this time.
Do we have anybody in the audience wishing to speak? Okay, is there a motion to close the co- the public comment?
Motion to close public comment.
Second?
Second. All right, uh, all in favor of closing public comment? State aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Very good. Item is closed. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, approve us personnel, Mr. Bishop.
Mr. Correo, first?
Second.
Second.
And second by Mr. Bishop? All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Loa?
Yes.
Councilmembers Correo?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
And Bettencourt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we- All right, now we've arrived at the item twelve point three. Is there anyone online wishing to speak on item twelve point three? Which has been removed from the agenda, but since it was listed as an agenda item, it does give the opportunity to the public to speak on that. Anyone online?
None at this time.
Anyone on the phone?
None at this time.
Anyone in the chamber?
Yes, David Paul?
Sir Paulo?
Good evening, city council.
Good evening, sir.
It's a pleasure to be here. Thanks for putting this on. I drove all the way over here to talk about this, so I really appreciate you letting me get up. I I got to tell my uh, new friend Brian in the audience how from the two thousand and six years, uh, my campaign for mayor in Lancaster in two thousand and eight, I pitched this idea of chartering our cities and everybody looked at me like, what was he talking about? Greater control over municipal affairs. That's what it was always about. You guys led the way. Lancaster did it very quickly after that and it's resulted in millions of dollars of revenue and control for our cities. So I'm used to looking stupid and then being right. So a- and and um, Mayor Pro Tem, I just want to tell you, when you were calling Mayor Hoffbauer, it sounded like we were in a seance, you know, it was a, it was pretty cool, but that's why I drove here. Just to say that I don't understand that whole affair of rotating mayors. I play this uh, board game on the computer called Civilization and when you reach in advance, they uh, give you a quote from somebody and when you get to monarchy, the quote is, "A multitude of rulers is not a good thing, therefore let there be one ruler, one king." And and I think somebody has to be in charge of this city as mayor and you can't rotate it because no one knows. And that's the other thing I wanted to get up here. I have not always agreed with Mayor Hoffbauer, but I love him as a human being and I have appreciated what he has done for this city because he goes to all these events, people recognize him and he does more goodwill for this city as mayor than anybody I've ever seen. Uh, so so that's what I just wanted to say. Um, I wish you guys would get back to that and I think both of our cities should get into fixing these problems of doing what I wanted to do with this strong mayor system. You know, the strong mayor system makes the mayor the true chief executive of the city and that's the future. That's the future. When this ex- area expands to be huge, we have to pay our public officials and let one guy, one lady be in charge. That's all it is. Um, it it's it's wonderful to be here. I I love coming here. This is the first place I came when I first started into politics and uh, I I I just love it here and I love seeing my friend, uh, Councilwoman Bettencourt and uh, my friend Rhonda Perez. You guys stole her from us and you got a great deal, so that's part of the talent that's local and we all have to work together and uh, whatever you do to resolve this mayor thing, let's just keep one mayor. That's my comment. Thank you, Mayor Hoffbauer, for all you've done, so thank you.
Very good, sir. Thank you very much. Let's see, Marsha? Wishing to speak?
Kevin Shankman?
Oh, Mr. Shankman. You're you're over here. My supposed to speak.
Hello, Marsha. I see right off that my uh, it's been probably six months and the clock is not fixed for my viewing here. Uh, excuse me, I'm not gonna look at that board and talk. I'm talking to you. I'm not talking to them and it's been six months and you cannot get the clock fixed? I'm sorry. I'm speaking on twelve point three. After the November election, our council will be made up of five district council members. Ordinance number fifteen ninety-eight deals with the creation of a rotating ceremonial position of mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. The position of mayor doesn't carry any more voting weight than the other council members, but for a year is the face of our city. Just off the top, I think this position would be, you'd think this position would be a rotating one through the different, through the different districts. But you need to read the entire ordinance to become clear, it becomes clear that the rotation is in no way involved in this. Each year, the council members themselves will elect by majority a new mayor and surprise, the previous mayor can be reelected for the upcoming year and the ordinance doesn't limit the amount of terms that that one person can have. Our council has shown in the past its communal side of banding together do not always work for the betterment of our city but for the gain of their own personal or district agendas. I would like to see the position of mayor be a rotating one, giving each district's elected representative an opportunity to be the face of Palmdale. Behind closed doors, deals are struck and follow the leader agendas are played out, one council member against the other. Taking away the vote will allow all districts their equal share to sit in the center seat. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the brevity as well. Mr. Shankman?
So with respect to the previous commenter, the future is certainly not strong mayor. The the future is district elections. I think the California legislature has made that pretty clear and a big part of the, a big reason for that is the city of Palmdale, actually. Um, I'm I'm pleased that uh, that this item was taken off the agenda. Um, I I've written to to each of you to express that this um, that that this adding this qualification to the position of mayor would be unconstitutional pursuant to the California Supreme Court's decision in Thompson versus Mellon and the analysis uh, in that case for such qualifications. Um, and also it would have the effect of diluting the representation of the Latino community east of the Fourteenth Freeway, right? Districts three, four, and five have an average of about about sixty percent Latino CIVAT and this change uh, proposed by Mayor Pro Tem Loa would 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 only have the effect in in that single cycle of excluding at least two and perhaps three mem- members elected from those those three districts. Because as we know, uh, District Five will have a new council member, District Four will have a new council member and and maybe District Three, maybe not. That's what elections are about. You know, so I I I'm happy this is, this was taken off the agenda and um, you know, but I I also want to say it it's inappropriate for one council member to propose an illegal way of becoming or having a better chance of becoming the mayor. Um, that's what this was, that's what this is. And it's also inappropriate for a council member to solicit uh, contributions for a council candidate in excess of the state limits from, let's say, the auto dealers, right? Ms. Alverdi, you know, I'm I'm, this is my time. Thank you. Ms. Ms. Alverdi accepted a contribution of ten thousand dollars from a single person. That is unlawful. The city should do something about it. She then filed an amended form, FPPC form saying that she had to divide it up because it was in excess of the women. You know, for someone who hides their racism, like Ms. Alverdi, under the guise of, we have to follow the law-
Folks, it's his time to speak.
For someone who hides their racism by saying that we have to follow the law, shouldn't Ms. Alverdi also follow the law? Thank you.
Mr. Shankman, I don't know who you, uh, state was uh, asking for that contribution. If you're referring to me, I did not do so.
Okay, that's all. That's what I heard.
Well, you heard wrong.
I'd be happy to discuss with you the source of my information.
Okay, and the other item that I believe uh, is incorrect is that um, the request that I made had nothing to do with minority representation or not minority representation. It was only a suggestion to try to get someone to be mayor, not necessarily myself, who had at least eleven months of experience before they got on it. After that, it was wide open.
City to our north has a mayor now who didn't have eleven months of council experience when he became mayor.
Well, I understand. So anyway, it's been removed and uh, your comments have been received. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, Guevargas?
Mr. Guevargas?
I'm gonna speak from the heart. I've been here fifty years. We were one city united. We didn't care if you were from east or west and then some outsiders come here and they want to divide us by race and color. You're Latino, you're black, you're white. To hell with them. We are one city united and we want to be able to vote for one mayor. Well, Budicek was the mayor, Gavin Newsom was in San Francisco mayor, Garcetti in Los Angeles, Rex Paris is the mayor of Lancaster proudly. People are allowed to vote for one mayor and well, let's all put this rotation baloney out of the, out of this discussion. We're one city. I don't give a damn what color you are. I came from Iran. I'm Christian Assyrian. I've been here for fifty-one years. I'm a proud American. There is nothing else. Nothing else for discussion. I don't give a damn if you're black or white or Latino or or Assyrian like, no, you're an American. And this is a city united. We all have to stand together and elect one mayor and all our fa- failed council members, districting based on our racial divide. And I'll tell the outsiders, go back to your own uh, neck of the woods and leave us alone.
Thank you, Mr. Guevargas. Anyone else?
No further speakers lips on this item?
Is there a motion to close public comment on this item?
Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. All right, so we are now at uh, twelve point four. Uh, this is a uh, let me see, we're at twelve point four, correct? So this is uh, the introduction adoption of ordinance number fifteen ninety-eight? Hello, how are you doing, Ms. Bettencourt?
Hi, this is twelve point four. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. I'm Sophia Reyes, housing manager. The item for your consideration is a request for public hearing to review the draft substantial amendment for the Community Development Block Grant Program to um, the twenty twenty to twenty, two thousand twenty-four consolidated plan and the two thousand twenty-one to twenty-two annual action plan. To receive public comment and direct staff to incorporate the public comments and a request for approval of this item, of the substantial amendments. The requested substantial amendments are to add an activity for the proposed public facilities and improvements acquisition of property to house the South Antelope Valley Emergency Services or SAVES to support their services in the Antelope Valley. Proposed actions include reprogramming funds of two hundred twenty thousand eighty-two dollars from the twenty, two thousand twenty to twenty-one Business Assistance Program, a hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars from the twenty thousand twenty-one, twenty-two Administration and Planning, a hundred thousand dollars from the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two Business Assistance Program and three hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, two hundred forty, three hundred eighty-seven, two hundred forty-four dollars of unspent funds from previous years, excuse me, completed projects for a total of nine hundred thousand dollars to the proposed public facilities and improvements acquisition activity. A public notice was published in the Antelope Valley Press on September fifth to inform residents the draft substantial amendments were available for review and comment. Staff is available for questions.
All right, uh, so are there any questions by the council, beginning with Mr. Bishop?
Uh, none at this time.
Ms. Bettencourt?
None at this time.
Mr. Carrillo?
How does this affect the acquisition of a building on Avenue Q and Thirty? Because last night the picture says it's building, right?
Uh, Avenue Q and Thirty, yes.
Does this affect acquisition?
This is to provide an activity to be, to fund the acquisition.
Very good. Uh, we will now open um, this item for public comment. Are there any persons online wishing to speak on twelve point four?
None at this time.
Anybody on the phone?
None at this time.
Anyone in the chamber?
None at this time.
Pardon?
None at this time.
None at this time. Motion to close public comment on this?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that closes the public comment. Is there a motion on this item?
And second?
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Mr. Carrillo and Ms. Bettencourt, second. Uh, vote call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
And Bettencourt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Bettencourt. All right, so we're now at thirteen point one, adopt resolution uh, number CC twenty twenty-two dash one oh three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale establishing the norms and procedures for the council's conduct of public business. Is there any staff to report on this?
So uh, this item was prepared uh, at the last meeting and was continued because of the request to make some minor amendments to uh, the the norms and procedures. Those amendments have been made at the request of council member Loa. Those changes uh, that he has requested appear in the norms and procedures and I'm happy to take any questions.
Uh, any questions, Mr. Bishop?
Uh, no, as long as all your address, uh, concerns have been addressed since the last meeting, I'm I'm good to go. I just wanted to give you the additional time and go over those those sticking points. Have you had time, Richard?
Yes, thank you, I have. I've had discussions with uh, Mr. Porter. Ms. Bettencourt, any questions?
I guess I'm just concerned about some of the the comments that um, we heard from the public um, regarding these.
I I I could address that. So I believe he was uh, referring to item uh, twelve point, twelve A, I believe. Uh, I guess he already left. But I I think his concern is, and and he's correct in making the statement that just because you talked about something in closed session, that doesn't cause it to be private. Like if we all talk about something that is public knowledge, uh, the sky is blue, everybody knows this. You talk about the sky is blue in closed session, that doesn't make it confidential, right? You're allowed to talk about that. The concern is, so he's saying technically he's correct, that that doesn't cause something to be confidential. However, as drafted, it's correct because what it says is, the fact that you talked about that in closed session, you're not allowed to tell anybody that's what we talked about. That's what you cannot disclose. So that's what you're agreeing. We can't discuss the fact that we talked about it. Additionally, if there's information that's being exchanged between you all, you shouldn't be telling everybody, this is their position on that item, this is somebody else's position. That's all confidential information and you should not be disclosing that without the approval of the rest of the city council. That could cause the public to have to pay substantially more and damages, et cetera, and I don't think that that's something that's in the public interest.
Okay, and what about the public's um, comments regarding the time limits of public speaking?
So um, certainly that that's something that you have the discretion to decide whether you want to impose a mandatory limit or if you want the uh, choice, want the ability to make a choice. I will indicate that it's fairly standard in cities that they do not set a hard immovable number. Um, rather that it's set up so that you have a uh, a standard, maybe as he was indicating as a norm, it would be three minutes, but wow, hypothetically, if you have five hundred people that show up and everybody wants to speak, in those instances, you might say, gee, we're not going to finish anytime soon. Maybe in this instance, based on the number of people, we'll leave it to the discretion of the mayor to limit that. But of course, the city council can always overrule whatever the mayor decides. So if the mayor says, oh, it's going to be only one minute, well, the rest of the city council always retains the option to say, no, actually, we want to have three minutes or you name it. So it's certainly your choice. You can do whatever you want. That's the reason that cities usually allow discretion. Uh, but it's entirely your choice.
Like, we may give um, a three-minute rule, but sometimes it takes people longer than three minutes to really say what's on their mind. For me, ha- having a brain injury, I understand that completely. It may take me a lot longer to spit out what I'm trying to say than someone else. So I I think that's important to recognize that it may take some people longer than others to to speak.
Well, and 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 by giving the discretion to the chair to make that determination, then the chair can make that decision. Now, the reason that you don't ask the city council every single time, do you all agree? Sometimes you can just make a quick decision and it's more efficient to run the meeting if they just make a quick decision rather than you all discussing every time whether you should be discussing. Again, you have full discretion. You can change it or approve it or mandate numbers. You can do exactly what he's recommending, entirely your choice.
Any other questions, Ms. Bettencourt?
No.
Mr. Carrillo?
What about engaging with uh, the public during their public comment? That was brought up earlier today too. Uh, is there something on the language on the ordinance that says that there cannot be engagement with the public or that engagement, if it's limited, answer yes or no? Is that something that is allowable?
So um, there is language in here. I can't quite find it.
Page three, okay, um, item seven on that page, that would be section four, role of the mayor.
Cause it says that we can't, we can't discuss things that's not on the agenda. So if a person comes up to the podium and starts to talk about something that's not on our official agenda, we're not supposed to, is my understanding. We're not supposed to engage because legally it's not on the agenda.
Correct. So what the Brown Act does allow you to do is it does allow brief comments that are not on the agenda and sometimes the most- And sometimes the most efficient way to, to resolve an issue is to just answer the question. Yes, I realize it's not on the agenda, but if you can talk to them for fifteen seconds, maybe you resolve their concern and you can move along. And so as revised by Mayor Pro Tem Loa, he, if you look at page three, section seven, as revised, it previously it said that you shouldn't ever engage in back and forth. Rather, this now revises it to say essentially, sometimes you could. It says the mayor and council members should attempt to generally refrain from back and forth conversations with speakers.
Does the council have the same discretion to ask the mayor not to do that if it's persistent?
Correct. And, and to be clear, this, these are norms and procedures. These are not operation of law. You're not violating any law. If any member of the public violates these, if you, if you violate these, rather, this is what you are saying is the best general consensus forward. Now, if the public does violate these rules and then you inform them of what the rules are and you said, no, you, you, for example, you had three minutes, you continue to speak past the three minutes, you can enforce those rules.
So, uh, cause I just have a lot of heartburn with us engaging in combative conversations with the public. The public has a right to come up and speak, whether we like it or not, what they're saying. They have a right to say what they want to say. They can, you know, with, within, you know, limits. They, they can share their opinions and we, we shouldn't be hostile towards that free speech. So I just want to make sure that our code of conduct says that while we may briefly engage, that we're not going to get into competitive conversations with the public because they, they do have an opportunity to speak.
That's true. Uh, if I may comment on, on that, um, we've had occasions when speakers will come in here and defame, for example, a city employee. I don't think, I don't think that you have a right to do that. Or to use profanities. I don't think the public has a right to do that. Um, there's certain limits. And, uh, the decorum of the City Council meeting is important, you know, for artwork and for the public to understand that this is something that the people can support. And that, so generally speaking, there should not be back and forth. Sometimes the record has to be corrected and it, and it should be briefly and not combatively. Do you have any questions, Mr. Carrillo, besides that?
No, I don't have any questions. It's just that, um, we've all experienced favoritism as far as when, uh, the mayor engages in conversations. And it was back and forth. It is not a simple correction. It just keeps going back and forth.
Yeah.
So that was one of the reasons why I did not want to get this extended. Um, but if it's on the document that he requested to be revised and if it's also in the council's power to have the mayor not continue engaging with, uh, people that come to their podium to speak for three minutes or whatever time that is, I think we've all experienced that.
Yeah. And the, uh, it says the mayor and council members should attempt to generally refrain from back and forth conversation with speakers. So it does include the mayor.
And, and if I may, um, on page three, uh, section four B six, it, it indicates exactly what I'm saying. The mayor does not have unbridled discretion to, to, to change, uh, public comment. Rather, it needs to be based on the number of people that are there to speak.
Right.
Okay, so in, in my example, it was, there are five hundred people here, let's change them out. Or there's only one person here, we've got time, we can give you additional time. So if you look at that section, it says, um, that it relates to, um, it's considering the number of speakers desiring to speak on a particular matter.
Okay. Okay, very good. Um, and with that, then we will open it for public comment. Uh, is there anyone online wishing to speak?
None at this time.
Anyone on the phone?
None at this time.
In the chamber?
None at this time.
Okay. Marsha, you wishing to speak on this? Okay.
I have not planned on speaking on this issue, but it is an issue that I have spoken on in the past concerning the, uh, time allotted to the citizens that elected you, that you allow us to speak. I believe as a citizen, what we can do, citizens, all citizens and visitors that come to this chamber that wish to speak, do not turn in a speaker's form. That is the way they count the amount, amount of speakers that want to talk on a particular subject. They cannot stop you from coming up, just as I did, now for the second time, without turning in a speaker's form. They are using those forms as a way of controlling the amount of time that they want to allot to us to speak. They will go on and on without a time limit, but it is those speaker forms that is their way to control us. Do not turn those speaker forms in. That's where they get the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. No one else?
No one else.
Okay. Is there a motion on this item? Well, yes.
Um, I just want to agree, Carol Ross, um, I just want to agree what Marsha was just saying. I, I, I think where we sometimes feel slighted and we understand that there's reasonableness to everything and you guys, you know, we can't go on till midnight all the time. But, um, I think that, uh, like for instance, when we were trying to, um, bring before you the ordinance fifteen seventy-seven, there was a night where there was a lot of union people here and they all got to speak. And there were a few nights that happened where they did get to speak a full three minutes, but when our group came up, we were cut short to a minute. And so that is, that is terribly unfair. So I, I do want to voice that. I think that, um, I, I don't like that and I, I, I agree with the turning in of the slips and sometimes you don't even know you have something that you want to say until that, that issue is brought up and you're hearing other comments and it spurs something in you to go, I really want to make a comment on that. And, and I feel like that's very limiting, you know, this is, this is our time to speak too. So I just want to put that out there. I, I agree. I think that we, we need to be allowed the, the three minutes. And, uh, if for some reason, you know, we're not, because there are literally five hundred people in the chambers, uh, which we are getting more and more people here, which I think is amazing. I, I'm so happy about that. Then I think it has to be an, an equal amount of time for everybody and please, let's not cut it from three minutes to one minute when people literally have things that are prepared sometimes and time it down to exactly three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, Mr. Alvarez.
Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'll be brief. Um, as I listen to these important comments by everyone here, right? The only thing that sticks out on my mind is generally speaking, city by city, county by county, what is the past practice should this council be faced with allegedly five hundred people? What do, what do they do when they reach a time and do they need to adjust it? Sometimes our answer is just in, in, in front of our face, right? We don't have to go over and over to figure it out. We've limited, this city has limited many members here when it's heavy here to one minute. And nobody's telling us if that's legal or not, right? So I, I encourage this council to, uh, I can't tell you what to do because I'm, but I am a taxpayer, right? But what has other important cities through the entire state of America do when you're faced with time allotment when the audience is more than at least a hundred plus people and you're trying to keep the agenda going on? So I'm just saying, follow past practice so we can continue this. Thank you.
Okay. Come on up, Mr. Gallego.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Alvarez, with all due respect, I think you misspoke. You can tell them what to do. State constitution says we have the right to instruct and that's what we're attempting to do right now. So it seems to me, as I said before, there has to be some sort of standardized decision here. And when you say, and I understand you're making a point, uh, Mr. Porter, but if there's five hundred people. Well, if that's going to be the case, then maybe the council should decide where is the cutoff at which we start limiting time. Not that I approve of that sort of thing because my question would be, and I don't know the legalities of it, I'll admit, but just in theory, I want to ask you, how many people need to be here before our rights start being limited? Because that's what you're talking about doing. You two, you, you, you two are citizens. How would you feel if your rights to speak for redress of grievances to your elected officials were limited? As far as I'm aware, there's nothing in the First Amendment that says you're free to speak unless there's X number of people present. So please keep that in mind.
Very good, ma'am. State your name, please.
Dawn Hardesty.
Thank you.
Is there favoritism at city council meetings? As an attendee of the Palmdale City Council Meeting of September twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, I was appalled to see one speaker who was in the middle of her public comment and had the microphone shut off. A veterans advocate, I think her name was Laurel, spoke on the alternate, alternative dwelling units in Palmdale not being in compliance with current ruling, which is discriminating against veterans by inserting the word existing into city documents. She came up, she gave examples. As of April seventh, they were in noncompliance with the law. She cited ten to fifteen incidences, which it was available on the Google search. You could see the Palmdale ADU ordinance. She was not in agreement with the actions of city council and informed them through emails as well. But promptly at three minutes, her microphone was shut off. She had much more to say but could not be heard. Surprisingly, listening to many other public comments from people at the city council, other speakers, developers, Chamber of Commerce people used more of their time past the three-minute mark and did not get their microphone shut off. I went online and I noted the minutes for each speaker. One city council member replied to a comment which was not on the agenda, according to the Brown Act, which is illegal, government code five four nine five four dot two A two. This rude behavior by city council shows absolute favoritism as many other speakers went longer without having their microphone shut down. It's shameful. Don't silence us.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Alright, this is not really a, uh, public hearing, but, uh, did you wish to speak, ma'am? Come, come on up, state your name. I, I couldn't hear you. Ms. Alvarez.
I've lived in Palmdale for twenty years now. I've experienced high school. I've experienced life. I've experienced all sorts of events that give me my own trajectory of life. Based upon those experiences, I have, first of all, I'd like to state that I have major depression and anxiety. So if I'm getting jittery, that is why. There has been so much going on in this Antelope Valley for a long time now and I feel like it's just causing a lot of back and forth. It feels like a playground. What are we doing here? I shouldn't have to come up here and tell you people to do your job sometimes. But it feels like sometimes that is what's necessary. Times, people sign up to become political leaders and they forget what they signed up for. That is unfortunate. I am not here to be an enemy. I am not here to start any type of issue. But it is concerning as a person, as a citizen, as a voter, and as a human. We all have issues. We all have concerns. We all have comments. But it is concerning when a lot of these comments, a lot of these concerns, a lot of these issues feel like they're being ignored. So when they speak of favoritism, what's going on? I, I don't understand. So when I'm speaking, I'm speaking out not only for myself but for people, for humanity, for the public. I shouldn't feel unsafe in my own neighborhood every day. I shouldn't feel unsafe at all every day, but it feels like that has been lengthening every day here in California. And so when we speak about these issues, we have to find common ground. We have common ground in some area. So with everything going on in California and nationwide, where will we find, not just in politics or in religion or in economy, when will we find?
Your time is up, ma'am. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. With that, is there a motion on this item?
Motion to approve it or motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, it's not really a public hearing, but okay, a motion to close the public hearing, since we've been having public.
Motion to close public hearing.
Okay, second. Second by Mr. Bishop. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? Very good. Alright.
I, I, I had a question for, uh, for Mr. Porter. These, these, this code of conduct, uh, you were telling me most cities have this, correct?
Correct.
So a lot of this is very boilerplate, like what we're doing here is what's done in many, many other cities across California?
That is correct. So currently you do not have any rules. So you do not have any way to, for example, if whoever is running the meeting is treating members of the public unfairly, cutting people off, not allowing them to have, you know, treating people equally. You currently don't have a rule to prohibit that. And so this, there's a reason that cities have these rules because essentially these are the rules. We all know what they are and at least, you know, it's like the law. It, it, it provides some boundaries. It certainly doesn't cause everybody to be perfect, but at least it says you can't do certain things and we all li- learn to live within boundaries on some level. And we figure out how to live to get along within those boundaries. That's the purpose of this.
Any other questions?
And we have the Brown Act and the Brown Act basically, it kind of lines up with this code of conduct, but the Brown Act goes further because it's, it's state law and it really, it gets into all the issues that were just addressed in public comment, correct? The Brown Act covers all of that and has rules for everything, right?
The Brown Act has rules as far as public meetings and how you need to allow public comment, et cetera. Yes.
Right. Everything that was just addressed and talked about for those that are listening.
Very good. Alright, any other questions? Okay, and so there's a motion, I believe, Mr. Carrillo?
Yes, motion to approve it as, uh, provided recommended by staff.
Alright.
I'll second.
Alright, Mr. Bishop, second. Vo call, please.
Mayor Paul Tim Loa?
Yes.
Councilmembers Carrillo?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
And Bettencourt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, item fourteen is a special report, presentation update on the investment grade audit performed on city facilities by Schneider Electric. Acting Director of Public Works, Glidden, and? She isn't here? Okay. Very good.
A little over a year ago, we released an RFP to several energy services companies, otherwise known as ESCOs, to do an investment grade audit for our city and to determine what kind of efficiency projects are needed. Through that process, it was sent out to several of these companies. Through that process, we received three proposals. These proposals went through two sets of interviews and we ended up selecting Schneider Electric, who's been working with us for about a year now and, uh, looking at performing this investment grade audit. This audit is a very, um, detailed audit. They looked at all of our facility, facilities pretty much and they looked at what our needs are and they've interviewed several staff members to determine what's going on in our facilities and what, what's not being addressed, uh, what needs to be addressed, what kind of changes are coming in the future. And so they're here now to speak about their findings and, um, this is just a report. This is not, we're not looking for direction at this moment. Uh, our plans are to come back at a future council meeting and to present an agreement with Schneider Electric to do all of the work that's been identified.
Okay. I assume you're representatives of Schneider Electric? Do you wish to make any comment?
Yes, we have a presentation, uh, I think she's ahead of us.
Three, uh, council members. My name's Rachel Torgerson. Um, I'm account manager for Schneider Electric. Um, your main point of contact as well for this project. Alongside me is Brian Puttinger. He is our technical lead or project manager, as we call him as well. Uh, but we are very thankful, um, for you and, you know, to, to be here today to share, uh, this project that we have been developing very closely with the city for, as this project that we have been developing very closely with the city for, as Ben mentioned, for the last twelve months. As he mentioned, we have been conducting site audits, collaborations, investigations throughout the city, touching, you know, every part of the city, working with so many of your departments, from maintenance, facilities, energy, parks and wrecks, and more. And these audits have really allowed us to understand the ins and the outs of the city, the major needs that your city has. And working so closely with the city as well, we've really developed a project that we believe is in the city's best interest. So in regards to, I'm not sure who's doing the little quick, oh, hi. You can go to the next slide. Sorry, I'll say that next time. But just in regards to the objectives of this presentation, and we'll try to keep it brief for you this evening, we just want to start with a quick overview and then dive into the scope, the firm fixed price, the energy savings, and make sure to leave time for any questions, feedback any of you may have for myself or our team. You may go to the next slide, please. So when we first started development of this project, we, as I mentioned, really dove in deep into the opportunities, the needs, but the big picture. What does the future look like, not just short term? How can we improve the city, you know, for the long run? So really, the focus of this project has been through the lens of energy savings, modernization. We want to transform the city with impactful improvements that touch each and every part of your city. I think equity is an important piece when going and going about this project. And we want to create a project that improves the efficiency, safety, and comfort for your community. So with that, there comes guaranteed outcomes as a result, whether that's reduced gas, energy, water savings, even chemical loss. So this really is about the long-term performance. And as a result, you'll see up on the slide, just under six hundred thousand in annual savings for the city, which equates to seventeen point eight million in savings over a twenty-year period. We can go to the next. We'll probably spend a little bit more time on this slide. But this is, as I mentioned, we've spent many hours auditing your city. And this project is important. And frankly, it's imperative that it happens sooner than later. And that's what this slide will address, is the current state of the city. So where we stand now, if we didn't move forward with this project, you know, where would the city be at? What could happen potentially? And then the future state, what are the intentions of this project? And where will we go if we, you know, perform this project? And so this project wasn't just, you know, scope, price, what did not come about just from looking at plan sets, it really came from many hours of working with your entire team. So I'm gonna, if you don't mind, Brian conducted many of those audits. He spoke with many of your members of the city. And so I would love for you, if you're okay with it, to share some of those findings of the audit in the current state, please.
Yeah, sure. So during the audit process, we were able to walk the various city sites, buildings, and parks with the city staff that maintain those facilities, electrical staff, heating and air conditioning specialists, building automation, the people that run the control system, your irrigation staff. And what we found is they've been doing a great job of maintaining the existing city facilities. And part of that has caused a lot of these pieces of equipment to be used past their useful life because they've been maintained. And what we found is the majority of the systems are, you know, outdated, inefficient, antiquated, and really past their useful life. We found with the heating and air conditioning systems, about two-thirds of the heating and air conditioning units on the city buildings are fifteen years or older. And that's part of something that we would look at as part of our project. For the building automation systems, your thermostats and your air conditioning controls, there's four different systems that the city uses to view all the different thermostats and temperature set points in the different spaces. Three of those are obsolete, and the city has wanted to standardize on one system that's in three or four of the newer installations called automated logic controls. So we're looking at converting the outdated systems over to that new system. And then also another major thing we uncovered was the irrigation systems are all on one central system, but the age of that system is such that the manufacturer is phasing out that platform of web-based control. And so those systems need to be upgraded to the newest version, or the city staff won't have access to be able to make those changes for the irrigation.
Thank you, Brian. So where would this project go if we were to conduct it? What does that future state look like? As Brian just mentioned, so many of the mechanical units are past their useful life. And this is a concern because your buildings are for, you know, for the community. We definitely don't want any of them to malfunction and have to, you know, for instance, at the development center, that is a community-based building, and we want to make sure that it is operating efficiently. So with this project, we'd be improving the air quality, ensuring that all of your units are up to code and meet ASHRAE standards, increasing ventilation and efficiency. We, as Brian mentioned, looking to standardize the controls to ALC. This was a big discussion with maintenance, and something that they definitely advocated for. It's something that they use in a few of the buildings. And it creates ease for the maintenance staff to have the standardized operations throughout the city, along with just efficiency for building occupants as well. And then, just touching on a few of these, so I'm kind of going through them. We are generating new revenue streams within your utility budget while also reducing the CO2 emissions and aligning with that twenty forty-five climate action plan that I believe all of you voted on. And so we're not only improving the health and safety of the buildings through indoor air quality, but also the safety and security of the city with LED improvements as well, which I'll dive into what the scope looks like broken down. So as we see on this slide, there are really going to be three categories that we're focused on for this project. That's the lighting, the HVAC controls, and other measures. Starting with lighting, we are doing LED interior and exterior lightings, lighting at thirteen sites, five sites of sports field upgrades. And then we are also doing, continuing to do the Anavero Streetlights, making sure that your nice architectural lighting is consistent through that part of the city. The mechanical units, anything over fifteen years or older will be replaced, and that's happening at twelve sites, as well as standardizing the ALC controls. And then moving on to the other measures, we are, as Brian mentioned, irrigation was another hot topic for your maintenance staff. You were in a constant state of drought, and we want to make sure that water savings are being, you know, we can capitalize on that and making sure that your irrigation controls and everything is up to date so we can maintain efficiency. That will be happening, I believe, at every.
Every city park.
Every city park, so twenty-two sites. And then we're looking to minimize supply times as well as cost escalations. And we're looking to do that through chlorine generation at your pools. So we will be generating those chemicals on-site, which aids actually in the safety as well as the cost escalations and supply chain issues that we're all facing these days. And then lastly, you've probably read somewhere in staffing report about some of these additional developments you'll see in the fourth category. That's around solar PV, battery, energy storage, microgrids. And then we're working with the maintenance team on an electrical EV fleet plan, as well as assessing the new saves building that you've acquired. So those aren't the main focus of this plan, but just something that Ben and Lynn, they've tasked us to continue development on. We can go to the next one, please. All right. What we're calling an equity map. This map, essentially, the green dots are where project, the project is taking place. So there's a multitude of scope measures, as I've specified, at a multitude of sites. So each green dot represents where projects are taking place. And we really wanted to show this map. You're probably familiar with it. We took the map from your city website, so that you would be familiar. But we wanted to show that essentially, every building in the city, it will receive some sort of modernization, energy improvement, along with your parks, with exception to one facility building that after auditing just didn't have the need for any modernization. So there really is a pretty good spread throughout the city, as we are touching on, I'd like to say, every building except for one. We can go to the next slide, please? So this is probably the slide you've been waiting for. You've probably been asking. I saw a nod. I can read your mind. But yeah, probably been asking, how much does this cost? Can we break some of this down? How is the city paying for this project? So as you can see at the top, under project cost, this project is right around, is, excuse me, firm fixed price, fifteen point nine six million. We are utilizing ARPA funds. Those are your federal state, or federal fund, grant funds, and that is in the amount of four point eight five. We are also utilizing on-bill financing, which is a zero percent loan funding, and receiving seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, as well as one point eight CIP funds. So this, again, as I mentioned, twenty years equates to seventeen point eight million in net savings for this project over twenty years, meaning that you have a budget positive project for the city. We have spoken with Janelle in finance, Rhonda, Lynn, Ben, you know, so many different individuals, we've come together. How is the city planning on paying for this project? And where will this money come from? So there is the intent to pay for this over multiple fiscal years. The first year already being, consisting of your ARPA funds in the amount of four point eight five, the on-bill financing, and the CIP funds. The additional year, we are applying for any, you know, grants. We're actively seeking any grants that are out there that are applicable to the city. And those will go towards upcoming years of other projects that maybe aren't listed here or other measures you're looking into, as well as dedicated funds by the city. So this project does include all the scope listed on the left-hand side of this slide and all the measures that we have discussed. Moving on.
Could I stop and ask you a question?
Yes, of course.
If we go back to that slide. If I'm understanding this correctly, so the project is just about sixteen million?
Correct.
And the source of funding, you've got about five from ARPA, seven hundred and ninety-three thousand from OBF, one point eight from capital cost, but that's much less than sixteen million. So where's the difference coming from?
Well, if I can chime in, that's for the first year of the project. Every year during the budget process, we will outline how we're going to fund the additional work that is needed. This is just what we can move forward with now that's under that fifteen point nine six million. And so there are future planned capital improvement projects that fall into the categories of some of the things that Schneider Electric's looking at. There's some dedicated funds that could be used for certain facilities that we would be able to budget towards this project as well. And for whatever shortfalls there are, there are ways to finance it where our savings will be greater than what we're spending. So it's going to be a revenue positive throughout the entire project as outlined. And the council will be able to chime in on each. I hesitate to say phase because in the staff report, phase two was the other projects that they mentioned that we haven't actually gotten to the end of that investment grade audit. But I guess you could say like phase one, A, B, C, et cetera.
So each budget year will be considered and allocated under different sources?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question too?
Sure, of course.
This four point eight five million that's coming from ARPA, was that already accounted for when the money that came from ARPA? Was this part of that equation, or is it something that we have to use because there are limits to how we have to use the ARPA money?
So there are several limits on how we use the ARPA money. There's four categories for spending? And this money was allocated in that process?
Was allocated to that process? Okay.
Thank you. Just go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions as well. Oh, perfect, thank you. So going into, I've mentioned energy savings a few times now. In addition to gas and water, when you start reducing those, we become more efficient and sustainable, and that has an impact on CO2 reduction. So when you take that over twenty years, like we're doing, we are making those reductions in energy. It has a big CO2 effect that is equivalent to, as you can see in the middle of the slide, twenty, over twenty-seven thousand trees planted or a hundred and forty-eight cars removed, eighty-nine houses powered. And that's what it comes to in regards to this project and what you can capitalize on. Going to the next slide, please. If you want to look at it purely from an electricity standpoint, the gray bar up here is what you're paying monthly, on a monthly basis, in twenty twenty-one, and that's month over month. You can see there are some spikes, you know, as you get into the hotter months. The green line here, that's our target line, and we are looking to reduce month over month by fifteen percent. That's where that seventeen point eight million is derived from. So over twenty years. And we can move on to the last slide, please. Great. So just in regards to the next steps, as Ben mentioned, we're not asking for any decision to be made this evening. We are here to just present what we've, the audits that we've conducted and the scope of work that we are prepared to go into construction for. We are hoping to come back to council in November for a vote on the project. From there, we would like to move swiftly into construction, if that's what council feels is best, so that we can hit the ground running and start in early twenty twenty-three on this critical project. So I really appreciate your time. Thank you for listening to us, and if there's any questions or feedback.
Mr. Bishop, do you have any questions?
No, I, none at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Bettenford, any additional? Mr. Carrillo?
Could you, a couple. As this project proceeds, and you're going to be looking for additional grants as the years come by, is Edison, could Edison be part of these grants that could serve this project?
Yeah, the on-bill financing that we identified on that one slide is in the California program.
The other one is with water. We've been working with the Palmdale Water District to create a recycle water pipe. We only have one sector of the city doing that, and we've been having a difficult time getting additional grants for copper pipe. Is that something that you're looking, you will be looking into as well?
Yeah, if that's something, we weren't aware of it. But we actually have an extension of our company where we really help our clients. Everyone, you know, is already so busy, wears so many hats. So we help them find the grants that are out there. There's so much. So, you know, it's hard to sort through everything, takes a while. So we really help find the applicable grants, make sure your grants are competitive as you're applying, so nothing's missed and you go to the back of the line. We really take the time to find any funding that can be applicable, whether it's for our scope or other areas of interest to the city as well. So that's something we would gladly love to.
So is that something that we'll have to coordinate with the Water District around that? Is that something that we can do?
Yes, and we can do it with Perwa as well.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions. Great presentation. Thank you both. Ms. Lucha, any other comments?
No, just like you was mentioning, we will come back to you at a future time, and we will present the budget. And we will present the first phase or the first, the remaining of this fiscal year, what we're looking to fund and how we're going to fund it. And every budget, every budget cycle, we will come forth with our proposed budget for these projects and outline where the funding sources come from to move forward, so that the council will be a part of the process throughout the entire thing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, we are now at item fifteen, public comments on non-agenda items. This portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the council on any subject within the city's subject matter jurisdiction, not on the agenda. Under state legislation in general, no action could be taken on items not specifically referenced on the agenda, but may offer suggestions. But may offer suggestions on how your concerns may best be resolved. To address the council regarding a non agenda item, please fill out a speaker's form and submit it to the city clerk before the mayor announces the item. Each person addressing the council is customarily given up to three minutes to speak with double time allotted to non English speakers using a translator. The amount of time authorized may be adjusted by the chair. If you wish to provide information to the council, please present the city clerk with seven copies. Otherwise, your materials will simply be added to the administrative record. If you're attending the meeting by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. If attending by personal computer, please click the raise your hand button. Press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and begin speaking. Do we have anyone online wishing to speak?
None at this time.
Anyone on the phone?
None at this time.
Anyone in chamber?
Benedict Waters.
Benedict Waters, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I want to speak to the garbage fee scam that the city approved. In July, contract between Waste Management and the City of Palmdale. Uh, the the contract included a fee increase of nearly twenty six percent in July of twenty twenty two. The inflation rate at that time was eight point five percent. The contract supposedly was required by SB thirteen eighty three. I read SB thirteen eighty three. It pertains to primarily cow manure, pig manure. And there are many people in the City of Palmdale who have a cow in their backyard. The contract supposedly this increase this humongous increase was supposedly required. To collect organic waste. We already have two bins in each residence for waste recycling. There's supposed to be a third one now for organic waste recycling, which is described as chicken bones. Spaghetti, old french fries, things like that, which as I understand it, garbage disposals are currently being used for. On top of that, this humongous fee is supposed to provide for a new bin for the organic waste. There are none. From July twenty twenty to today, no special bins, although we paid for them. The city council approved this contract and Waste Management billed everybody this humongous new increase in fee. And no bins. Not only there no bins, but they also require more trucks to. Collect the the waste from these special bins. Now you have three trucks come out. For the lawn clippings and gardens, waste. For plastic bottles and metal cans. And then third bin for your ordinary waste, three different trucks. For this organic waste, then you will need a fourth truck to not to combing over the waste. There is no fourth truck. There's no bin, no fourth truck, unless the City of Palmdale plans to go from house to house and removing the garbage disposals. There won't be any organic waste to collect anyway. So it was the the this. Twenty six percent increase is a pure fraud. It's a scam. I would like the City of Palmdale to contact Waste Management and tell them they have to refund the money they collected. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Uh, next speaker?
Phil Diddy.
Mr. Diddy.
Good evening, council. I just want to go back to the meeting of September seventh. It was agenda item number fifteen point two at that time. And this was regarding the stipends for commissioners and others that serve on our boards. That make our make our city go. Mr. Bishop, if you can hear me, at that time you said you had nothing in your packet. And there was no staff report and you needed more information. I have something here that you can have. I don't know if you can see me. Would you like it? Yes or no?
Yeah, I couldn't hear you on video.
Was that yes?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Bettencourt, would you like the same thing?
Well, of course, anything that the public wants to present can certainly go to the city clerk and they'll distribute it.
Mr. Loa, how about you?
Sure.
Mr. Correa?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, good. I have them all right here with me. I'll distribute them soon as I'm finished. Also on this, Mr. Porter, you said we'll bring this back.
Mr. Diddy, you have to direct your comments to me as a chair, please.
Oh, okay. All right, forget that last one.
Well, you can speak to Mr. Porter through me. Go ahead.
No, Mr. Porter said we will bring this back and that that has not happened so far. So I'm a ten thousand percent convinced. That if I did not bring this up, that I have a fear that the council. Would kick the can down the alley and it wouldn't and I'm here to stop the can. It's that simple. At that particular meeting, Mr. Correa, you said. Two fifty would be an appropriate amount for appreciation for what they do. And I think you you nailed it. You're only talking about going from one hundred to two fifty. I've seen the I've seen the council go to millions and millions. This is easy. From one hundred to two fifty, so I'm going to ask you to put that on the agenda. And vote on it on October nineteenth. And this would make a number of people happy. And it's deserving. We have people that give of their time and. Even their treasures to help the City of Palmdale. And so that would be. That would be a fabulous thing. I'm going to hand these out to the members.
Your time is up, sir, but thank you.
Yeah.
Next speaker?
Rich Gallego.
Mr. Gallego. Give him to the clerk, please. Hand him over here, please, and she'll she'll distribute them. Go ahead, Mr. Gallego.
So I'd like to speak to you guys again about Measure AV funds. We're not going to let this drop. I'm here on behalf of the Palmdale Freedom Coalition, as you probably know. Before I get to that, I just want to say that earlier, there was an individual up here. That made some rather scurrilous remarks about Erica Alverdi that are patently false. He does not know the whole story. He should not have spoken on them. And I know that it was a stunt because he's trying to tear her down because he's backing a candidate with a substantial arrest record. I'll leave it at that for right now. California Constitution, Article sixteen, Section six prohibits making gifts of public funds. That is exactly what you're doing by giving away the Measure AV money to special interest groups. That money does not benefit the entirety of the citizenry in Palmdale. It only helps the people. The small percentage of the population that are members of these special interest groups. We've said this again and again, and so far as far as I know, it's fallen on deaf ears, but we're not going to let it drop. Political Reform Act of nineteen seventy four prohibits conflicts of interest arising from public officials voting to make gifts. To special interest groups with whom they have an interest or relation. Relationship. We have said before, Mr. Correa, we believe you are intimately tied to SALVA.
Mr. Gallego, please address your comments here.
Forgive me. We believe that he is intimately involved with SALVA and we have the canceled checks through FOIA request. I'd like to know why did the City of Palmdale give sixty four hundred dollars to SALVA for entertainment at a Hispanic Hispanic Heritage celebration? That does not benefit the entirety entirety of our citizenry. I'd like to know why they the city paid a thousand dollars to SALVA for census taking, which last I checked was in the purview of the federal government. Several other checks written to SALVA for things that don't benefit the majority of the citizenry. We've got the, like I said, I've got the canceled checks. Why did Mr. Correa spend four hundred dollars of taxpayer money for a table at a SALVA event? These are things that I'd really like some answers to, especially if I'm to believe that there's no conflict of interest there. These things seem pretty darn clear to me and at the very least least, they deserve some sort of an explanation. The public should know this is a lot of money and those are just a few of them, by the way. We've got a bunch of them. I would like to know why it is that the citizens of Palmdale are paying for this stuff. It's unconscionable and from what I can tell, it's illegal. So it needs to stop. The dispersal of these funds needs to stop. The other thing I want to mention is this October twenty second diversity and inclusion event that's supposed to be happening. Can we please stop pointing out our differences in this city and start focusing on the thing that binds us together? That we're Americans? It does not help to tell everybody, oh, Hispanic heritage, Native American heritage, Finnish Taiwanese. Let's stop it, please.
Thank you, Mr. Gallego.
Christine Parkinson.
Ms. Parkinson. You're good? Okay, next speaker?
Don Hardesty.
Mr. Hardesty. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Carlinia Davis.
Carlinia Davis. Good evening.
Good evening. It's actually Gerlina. Don't say that I.
I stand corrected.
That's all right. I do have a few items that I'd like to mention. Yes, I am disappointed. When I ran with you or ran with you in twenty sixteen, I. I'm disappointed because I'm seeing the corruption and I don't know. I I I'm disappointed because I see some of the corruption. I'm one of the ones that is that's doing the FOIA request. And looking at these checks for thousands of dollars. That are to special interest groups. And eighty five thousand dollars and ninety six thousand dollars. The other issue that I have is Andrea Alarcon. I do believe there's an issue regarding her filing and it being timely. The other issue that I have is she's part of Rex Paris's law, actually, no, Shankman's law firm. Why are we bending over in this city? To Shankman and to Rex Paris? And to now we need to Rex Paris is telling the auto mall that. They should be supporting Andrea Alarcon and she has a record, a criminal record now. The other thing too that I find is interesting that I've done FOIA request, no, it's not FOIA, it's called CIPRA. Public records request. When I actually asked for the communications from the city council. You guys did an attestation, I believe it was an attestation. Saying that you went through all of the emails of the communications that I'd asked for and you gave us gave me. What you felt was appropriate. How in the world is that right? That's not. That doesn't purport to the rules of making the public aware of what you are doing. Basically, it's called censorship. This is the first year that I believe the public records request would generally be around a hundred, maybe two hundred max. Do you understand that you have well over four hundred public requests? There are people in this city are appalled at the corruption that is going on daily. Another thing I want to say too, the organization that came here, I I want to make it clear to the residents of Palmdale. When I moved here in twenty thirteen, I figured I knew that Palmdale has money. Palmdale has always had money. The finance department does a great job of investment. When you look at the financial layout. Palmdale has more money than Lancaster. So why would you bring in companies in here? And they're they're waiting to to get bid on so that they can contract and and get money. But you tell the residents, we don't have money for stuff. I just want to say that's not true. Don't believe the lie. The Palmdale has money.
Next speaker?
Marcos Alvarez.
Mr. Alvarez.
I'm going to change the tone a little bit here. I just want to say thank you to the city. To to the to this panel who allowed the first mental health event that took place last week. Everybody here knows someone who has a challenge mentally and needs that help and they turn the other way. So this event is a big stepping stone for future events for the entire community. I was glad to march through it. I was glad to have conversations with victims of this stigma. Who had no up to that point had never been able to speak. The big board that was in this park right here in the front, all the messages that were there. So thank you for for caring. Thank you for doing this. I think we can collaborate and continue to lift this community. By repeating this event, not just annually, but maybe every half half a year, right? Because you never know what happens with somebody here right now who's experiencing some sort of mental challenge. So I just want to bring that up and tell everyone here, thank you for allowing that event to take place. And I know there's a couple of million dollars has been thrown out there, so I'd like to know what we can do to concretely invest that for future projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. All right, ma'am. Stick your name, please.
Hey, Christine Parkinson.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I know I need to address you. I what I am upset about is kind of the the bickering that's going on. I understand that some of you don't like the mayor. You're glad he's gone, the rotating mayor thing. You should have given that a choice to the people. Should have always been for the people. Measure AV money is being spent miss or misspent. And it's up to the citizens. When when I was talked to about voting for it, it was to support infrastructure in the city. Not to pay for nonprofits, to put special money at special interests. And speaking of nonprofits, I'd like to thank the Vine Refuge for supporting that mental health awareness walk last weekend. And if anyone doesn't know. Who the chair for the Vine Refuge is, it's Erica Alverdi. Okay, and I am so tired of hearing people come up and throw racial slurs at everyone. I know you've experienced multiple times. And it's unacceptable. The people that cry racism are the racist. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Yulga Vargas.
Mr. Vargas.
Thank you. Real quick, two comments. Mr. Loa and all the council members, please, let's learn something from Lancaster. I'm not a very big cheerleader of Lancaster. As you know, I always get. But let's face it, when I called them and I told them about the graffiti on my building. Ken Man right away ordered and they came and cleaned it upstairs. Here, when I asked code enforcement, they said, we don't have the money. We don't have the crew. Honest to goodness, this is exactly what I got. I don't want to mention names. Now, when you get off Palmdale Boulevard, the freeway, or especially if you go Parabloson Highway on twenty fifth, look at that couch has been there. Five months, right at the intersection. We have mattresses everywhere. This is our city's pride. Let's clean it up. Let's have a crew. That's all they should do. Remove graffiti and please, please all the trash. Let's move that. Another one I want to say, I was born and raised in the Middle East, as you know, and Erica Alverdi was born in Mexico. And I just had the pleasure recently to meet with this lady. Thirteen years. She helped charitable foundations, children who were in foster homes. They had nowhere to go when they were becoming adults. She secured their future. I have nothing but nice things to say about Erica Alverdi. She's a God fearing lady. She's a true Christian and a true American. Thank you.
Carol Ross.
Ms. Ross.
Thank you. I wanted to just really speak really quick on somebody else already brought up the event, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Festival. So my impression from this and my fear of this is that although it may come across like it's supposed to be inclusion. Again, we keep pointing fingers and separating out particular races, particular, you know, orientations. And I think that does nothing but create division and we need unity. And that's I found that I found that very disturbing. You know, I I when I come up here, I share a lot with you guys, the the word of God because it's the truth. And the reason I just I share it is because it says to create thing and it shall be established. And I think we can get so much from it. The word of God says a house divided against itself cannot stand and it and we're seeing. These types of events, I just don't see where they're going to bring unity. It's like a few of. Some of the other folks here said, you know, we're we're Americans. We are citizens. We're residents of Palmdale. But yet there seems to be this constant focus to bring division. And it seems like there's a lot of outside influence that we don't like and we want that to stop. We want the division to stop. We want the outside influence to stop. We want to be united. I want to read something from Luke twelve, two through three. There is nothing concealed that will not be disclosed or hidden that will not be made known. What you have said in the dark will be heard in the daylight. And what you have whispered in the ear in the inner rooms will be proclaimed from the roofs. We need transparency. We need honesty and we need unity. And we will be successful. We are a city on the hill. That's what we are and that's what we are going to be. We have declared it in this chamber, declare a thing and it shall be established, it shall be established. The corruption, any corruption is going to fall off. So I, I just pray that you open your hearts to the word of God and take heed to it. Um, why do I, why do I share the word so much? So is my word that goes out from my mouth, it will not return to me empty, but it will accomplish what I desire and it will achieve the purpose for which I sent it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
No further speakers, please.
I think Marcia wishes to speak and sir, you'll be next. Come on up, Marcia. He'll be next after you, that is.
My name is Marcia. It used to be Mickey Mouse, but today it's Marcia. Pink's the, excuse me, pink is the color of October. You'll see it everywhere, sending a message of how important it is to get your annual checkups. Breast cancer in the U.S. kills forty-two thousand women and five hundred men each year. Eighteen years ago, I discovered a mass, a double mastectomy, two rounds of chemo and radiation allows me to be standing here in front of you, pleading with you here in our, in our council chamber and those of you at home to get your checkups and encourage all the women in your families to get your mammograms. Since I have a few minutes looking at my side clock, I would like to give forth a little historical, um, a little bit of history. When the world, um, melted before COVID, the financial meltdown down, our city was struggling. And the Parks and Rec Department was struggling just like every place and cuts needed to be done. People in Palmdale like their Parks and Rec and they liked all the facilities that were, um, offered. So the citizens stepped up to this microphone to voice their opinion on all things Parks and Rec. It took our elected officials, three meetings, back to back, three nights. They convened to allow every single person that wanted to speak for three minutes on that subject, the ability to speak. They came back two extra times to allow the people that elected them the voice that they, um, that they wanted, when they wanted to speak. So there is precedent for the five hundred. I don't think there was five hundred, but there was three days worth. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. Come on up, sir.
Well, first of all, my name is Richard Alverdi.
Yes, sir.
And I'm Eric Alverdi's husband. If you're, this gentleman that called my wife a racist, that makes me a racist, right? I'm not. That little girl right there, that's my goddaughter. She's African-American. And I'm damn proud to be that young lady's godfather. As a citizen, as a parent, as an adult, and someone running for office, of course, there's going to be all kinds of different opinions of that person. They don't know her. That idiot doesn't even know her. Okay? You know what I tell my wife? I want to meet these other representatives to get to know them because if they make it to office, we got to support them in any way possible. We got to support you, you, you and you. I mean, you guys aren't elected officials, but we still got to support you. If we want to make this city better, then we need to support each other regardless of what we are and who we are, what race we are. And again, like Rich, Rich Gallego said, or whoever mentioned it, if that person's the one that's mentioning it, then he's a full-on racist. Okay? You ask, you talk about, I'm bringing up, and that's where that part, okay? My wife is a God-fearing person. You know who she puts first before anybody else? Him. Him. Not me, not my kids, not my mother-in-law, not you guys or the city. She's going to put God first to control the city, to help get the city back where it needs to be. Okay? Also, you talk about experience. I'm sure you all didn't have experience when you guys got office, right? None of y'all. Didn't know how to control the city, how to work the city, none of y'all. Right? You didn't know what to do. I'm pretty sure you didn't. You're a lawyer, right? I believe you're a lawyer. I think you're, you're, you were an attorney or something. I don't know your background all that. But guess what? It starts with getting in there and putting their feet dirty and your hands dirty to learn what it's all about. Because this woman right here, you guys can talk all the smack you want, but if she's elected and she gets on, she's going to bust her butt off for this city. And I guarantee you, she's going to do a damn good job if she does get elected and, and she makes that seat. And God knows that she's going to make it regardless of what everybody else's opinions on. You know, I, and I wasn't going to come up here because sometimes I do get long-winded and all that, or I might say the wrong thing, but I'm going to tell you what, I'm going to stand behind her because she's my wife and I'm going to stand behind everybody else that gets elected because guess what? We want this city back to normal. And like I know that Yul said real quick in regards to the trash. And I told my wife, I was doing Long Halt, driving to Oklahoma, guess what? From Arizona to Oklahoma, they keep their streets clean. They're out there busting their butts every day.
Your time is up, sir.
So anyways.
Thank you. So we are at informational report for mayor and our council members on the various committee memberships and meetings attended at public expense. Ms. Bettencourt, I believe you filed a report. Uh, Mr. Bishop, do you have anything to report, sir?
Mr. Loa.
I don't have my calendar in front of me, but I will get a report, uh, later.
Mr. Correa. That was interesting.
Mayor Poetan.
I can't remember if the duck race was.
I'm sorry for interrupting, but we still have some public comments.
Oh, we do, sorry.
We have one person online with their hands raised, uh, Laurel Forrest. If you'll be to unmute yourself.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Oh, is it my turn?
Yes.
Thank you. Laurel Forrest here. Um, I wanted to say that I wanted to advocate on behalf of people with disabilities who cannot really see the city council meetings and other commission meetings easily. Because first of all, when you look at it on the city website under that link for web based, it's very scratchy and the display by the last presentation about the water system or the electric system was so pixelated, you can't make out a single word on most of them. And now I switched to the Zoom broadcast so that I could raise my hand. I noticed it's a little clearer and the mic system, the speakers are a little clearer, but on the city website, it is so faint. I put on a couple of different headphones at the highest quality. I won't pitch a brand name, you know, the best ones. And you still can't hear because garbage in, garbage out is an old programmer's adage. And if you don't give it the volume, it can't be amplified at the other end. So I want to ask you to use what I asked, uh, six weeks ago meeting, at the meeting. I stood up at the podium and asked them to use the full Zoom camera um, capability to have a Zoom camera on every council member with automatic switch to whoever is the speaker at that moment. So people can see their face and have a giant, giant name tag in front of them to see their full name and what district they're from, who's speaking. And it also helps when there's a, a speaker to have the camera closer up. Now, right now you're broadcasting Zoom at the diagonal from the rear corner, the rear left corner from your point of view, city council members. But then only sometimes it goes a little up close to see the back of the speaker. But even then, it's not as clear as if you have full Zoom capability like we've all been using for professional meetings for two and a half years now. And there's a few other things too about providing, um, other ADA vision and hearing and cognitive disability accommodations, which I've emailed to the city manager and the wonderful city clerk, if it's Roxanne, if she's, I can't see if that's who it is, during this meeting. And asked them, reminded them again, I've raised this before without any result and no response from anybody. And I'm telling now that we really need to enhance this because you see how many people are in the audience. You don't know that there might be quite a few more listening from home, watching from home, if they could only access it with more clarity. So please respond to that and try to make these fixes before the next meetings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else online?
No more for now.
Anyone on the phone? All right. I think we're done with the public comment portion.
So do we need to make a motion to close public comments?
Just make one.
I'll make a motion to close public comments.
I'll second that.
I'll in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's formally closed. All right, so we were at, uh, committee memberships, uh, and we were at, uh, Mr. Correa.
Yes, um, so the one million dollar duck race, I attended at, uh, the, um, Drytown, I believe you were there too. Uh, fun event. They actually, uh, reported the winners at the, uh, founder's school district meeting last night. And I think that it was Chaparral, the one that got first place. And they got like four thousand dollars or something like that. Um, fundraising fundraising, as I understand.
Yeah, fundraising.
The fundraising, uh, through the Kiwanis. The Antelope Valley Fair, I attended that, uh, I think that it was a good turnout, so a lot of people like, oh, actually saw you there too. Uh, the concerts were awesome and people just coming in, uh, it was an awesome event. People are happy to go back to the fair. Today was National Day Walk to School. I, uh, woke up my kids today at six. They're into Dominic Masari. They go to Golden Poppy, so we walked from Dominic Masari all the way to Golden Poppy. And, uh, we had three deputies escorting us, uh, you know, blocking the streets and I want to thank the deputies that, uh, were able to, to attend this morning's event. Um, tomorrow is going to be a SCAC meeting, uh, Region Council and also HCDC. Um, I'll be attending those tomorrow and I'll report on those now at the next meeting. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Correa. Um, so while we had one on September first, I'm a member of the transportation, I believe you're on housing. So I attended that. Uh, we had a fireworks, uh, celebration on September the third, well-attended, uh, great show.
Yeah, I think we were all there that day.
I hope we keep that going on. I do, uh, participate in the Spanish talk radio uh, on the same day that we have the council meeting that's on local radio station to inform the public in Spanish about things that are going on in the city. I, uh, attended County Sanitation District Twenty. Um, we had the Tricare prescription kiosk ribbon cutting at Plant Forty-two. And then, uh, of course, we had Mr. Heffernan who retired.
Yeah.
Uh, after, after giving, uh, great service to the city of Palmdale, Public Works Director. Uh, hated to see him go, but I'm glad that he's going to have, he's going to have a good future. Um, you mentioned the seventeenth annual one million dollar rubber duck race, which is Kiwanis fundraiser. And I attended that. And then that same night, there was a Navy Fair Recognition Dinner. I attended that. Um, Grace Fest, um, was held on September tenth at the amphitheater, very well-attended, a great program. Uh, very spiritual, very moving. Uh, the, um, on September eleventh, we had the, uh, that is nine eleven, annual fallen heroes, heroes memorial ceremony, and several of us there for that. Uh, we had a press conference on September fourteenth regarding the city's downtown revitalization projects. This area in here that was, uh, also attended, we put the information out uh, for the city to understand that the city is moving forward with, uh, infrastructure improvements, uh, in the central city here, uh, which is going to be the benefit to, uh, everyone in the city. Uh, there was a rollout of the first MQ dash four C Triton ceremony at Plant Forty-two. Uh, that's an awesome aircraft. It's a drone that, uh, is going to be put to use by the Australian Navy. And it was just a very impressive thing. It was very honored, uh, along with you, Mr. Correa, uh, Mr. Bishop, and I believe Mr. Hoppar were present. We had a Homes for Families, uh, Rainbow Building Special Recognition of the City of Palmdale. Uh, Ms. Bettencourt, you were there at that. We presented a check, uh, to that, uh, very worthy uh, organization. They're building homes for veterans, um, over on Division Street. And, uh, it's a very worthy proj, uh, project and we're delighted that the city of Palmdale can contribute to that. We have, of course, uh, the AVTA, uh, briefings, and then we have the Animal Valley Transit Authority meeting that I attended as well. And the AVTA meeting was on September twenty-seventh, providing transportation services, uh, to anyone who needs it, but particularly for, um, persons that don't have automobiles, uh, or other mode of transportation. So, um, between the cities of Palmdale, Lancaster, uh, we provide services as well to the unincorporated areas. And, uh, that's a significant thing that, that we all provide. And, uh, we did have, uh, Mr. Alvarez, you mentioned, uh, the money that was allocated, uh, for mental health in this budget twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, we had a meeting, uh, Ms. Bettes, myself, uh, Messiah's, with the director of Animal Valley Hospital to how is it that we can use the funds to directly, uh, treat people that are affected by mental health? And, uh, that discussion is going on with LA County and also with Palmdale Regional, uh, to find the best way that as a city, we can provide direct treatment, psychiatric treatment uh, and other services to people who are afflicted by mental health, which has been pointed out is a very significant problem. Several people from the city, uh, did attend the sister cities association, uh, visitation to the city of Poncetlan, Jalisco. And I understand it was very, very successful. I had planned to go, but since the mayor was going to be gone and other pressing issues, I, I decided to stay here. But I understand that that was very positive and it is a good relationship that we have with our sister city in Jalisco. All right, so that's my report and, uh, we go now to.
Can I just jump in really fast? I know I do a written report so that the public can read the, the things that I've done, but I just want to mention probably the most important thing that I've attended, which was just this past weekend. I attended the Contract City, um, Educational Summit. And our entire topic was emergency operations centers. Um, because the city of Palmdale is going to upgrade ours, which is, if Florida wasn't a wake-up call for every city across the nation, it should have been. And so the city of Palmdale, uh, is, is taking very close look at how we operate an emergency operations center, what we need to be most effective to keep our residents safe and, and in, in their homes and, and render aid to them when they need it. So that, that was an amazing, um, experience. It was several, um, several seminars on, on what to do and how to do it, who's done it the best and how we can recreate that within our, our budget guidelines. Um, so the city of Palmdale is working actively to make sure that our residents are safe. And, uh, the, um, Florida was, was, was happening while we were in the training and, and the seminars. And it was a huge wake-up call and we're, we're really working diligently. And I just wanted the public to know that, that we are attending this training to make sure that we can do the best that we can, um, in, in a very quick fashion. So I just wanted to say that.
That's a high priority for, for all of us here. Absolutely. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, uh, city manager's report.
Good evening, council. So just to address a couple of things that came up this evening, we do have a new podium lecturn on order. It's been on order for several months, but with supply chain issues, um, it's taken some time to get it here. It does come equipped with, um, uh, telescoping ability for ADA access as well as the clock that so many have commented on. So it's on order. Um, it actually, I think, comes in at the end of this month. Um, regarding commissioner pay, we do intend to bring that back to you at, uh, either the next meeting or the first meeting in November. There are some, um, there, it's more than just pay. At this point in time, only two commissions are currently paid. We have twelve commissions, so it does have a fiscal impact. As well as once, uh, a certain threshold is passed, all of the commissioners have to receive additional training on AB twelve thirty-four, thank you, as well as, um, some form requirements and reporting requirements. So it's not, it, it's not turnkey, so we just want to make sure that we're thorough and understanding when we present it before you for consideration. Uh, I did receive Ms. Forrest's email, so we will look into those. You will notice in the last couple of meetings, we have turned on subtitles um, and captioning, uh, at the request of ADA. And I will look into the pixelation that she's, that she's talking about on our website. Um, part of the issue is that we are zooming right now and the Zoom, it does. Um, part of the issue is that we are zooming right now and the Zoom, it does not integrate with our Granicus, which is how we had our old voting system and all the things you used to see here and how we could switch from camera to camera. So um we'll see if there's a fix that we can that we can source for that one. Um, I was excited to hear you talk about the E O C. We are dedicating uh over a million dollars to put into uh uh renovation and and development of an E O C this year out of Measure E V funds, so that's underway and in design right now. And as far as the calendar goes, uh there's a lot of opportunity to get involved in the city here in October. Um, coming up this week, uh we did have that mental health walk this past weekend. It was very well-attended, very well-received. Coffee with a Cop happened this morning. We have a first responder youth summit. Uh, we also are extending Legacy Commons Hours. Kaleidoscope Art and Music Festival occurs this Saturday at Marie Kerr Park. Uh, we do have the tentative construction starting at the Civic Center on the complete streets, which you just referenced, that we had the dedication ceremony just a couple of weeks ago. That is anticipated to start next week on the tenth. And uh then uh I'll I'll cover the back half of the month at the next meeting. So there's a lot of great things going on. Um, and that's it for my report.
Thank you. And I did I did attend that mental uh mental health uh uh event that took place here at Poncitlan. It was very well-attended and lots of vendors there. Very good. Um, city council request for new agenda items. Mr. Bishop, do you have anything you'd like to request? He may have left already.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I do want to thank.
I apologize. He did just text me that he dropped off the call.
Okay, I want to thank Mr. Bishop for for attending by phone, um because he took time away from a religious hot uh a religious event uh in order to be here at city council. I I I respect that. Uh, Ms. Bettencourt, any requests? Mr. Correa.
No, I wasn't request for this happens, but that's already been addressed, so.
Thank you. Very good. Uh, with that, I don't have any requests either. We'll adjourn the meeting to October nineteenth at seven P M in City Hall Council Chamber located here. And thank everyone that uh attended and uh we appreciate the comments that are made, whether we agree with them or not. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Guevargas. Did we get the uh item that Mr.?